All right, everybody. Good afternoon. It is 1:02 PM, February 23rd. This is a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Can I get an approval of our agenda?
Commissioner Mudge, we need to remove the recreation items off of the agenda, please.
Yep, we, I did, when I reposted to include what is now Agenda number two or three, rather, I removed the, oops, I removed the recreation contracts from that. So, and I accidentally entered the agenda into the chat. I was trying to correctly format that, so it's a little jumbled up there. But right now, Agenda one is CBS accounting contract with finance. Number two, second reading of the resolution to increase landfill fees. Reading and discussion with public comment. Number three, discussion of corner matter. The commissioners may move into executive session pursuant to CRS 246402. And number four, work session will then move into a work session with building and land use staff.
Okay. Sounds good. I will make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, great. And before we move through this, I don't see any, I think I've correctly labeled Tara Espinoza on here. I see a caller or a participant iPad. Would you identify yourself, please, so we can get you properly named? Is somebody on here that's currently showing as iPad? You are muted. Okay, no response. All right. Given that, we'll go into our business items. First on the agenda is the CBS accounting contract with finance.
There, we didn't vote on that, on that motion to approve the agenda, sorry.
Apologies for that, no problem. Thanks for catching that. All right, any further discussion on the agenda as it is set?
No.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll move into business. Number one on the agenda, the CBS accounting contract. This is with finance and a renewal. And I don't have any questions on the renewal of this contract. I see Crystal Hewitt is on. Crystal, do you want to make any comments on the contract for us?
There's nothing new. It's standard from prior years. There was an increase over the 2020 amount from 165 per hour to 175 per hour. Christine with CBS Accounting continues to assist the treasurer, finance, as well as the finance director for Department of Human Services for items that arise that we either need a second look at or we're not understanding, helping out with reconciling items, audit prep, basically anything that we cannot facilitate because we, it's a stumber or lack of time. She has years of experience helping the county, so she's a huge asset. I feel like on my end, I still feel like I'm the new kid on the block, although it's almost been three years. But yeah, other than that, there's nothing new.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. I don't have any questions for you, Commissioner Fiedler or Commissioner Marcela. Do you have any questions for Crystal?
No, thank you.
Okay.
No, thanks. That sounds straightforward.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the contract with CBS accounting.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. And moving into number two, the second reading of the resolution to increase landfill fees. I have the resolution that I can read into the record. Just pull that up. Okay, and before I do that, I see Michael Irwin is on the phone. Michael, do we have any other comments or public feedback from our last reading of the proposed resolution for landfill fees?
I have not heard anything come through here.
Okay, I have not either. All right. I will go ahead and read that into the record. Proceeding on the Board of County Commissioners, County of Lake and State of Colorado, a resolution regarding the use and fees for the Lake County landfill. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners determines and declares it is necessary and proper to provide for the safety, preserve the health, promote the prosperity and improve the order, comfort and convenience of the County of Lake. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners owns and operates a solid waste disposal site for the deposit of refuse and is empowered to do so pursuant to 30-11-1071 KCRS. And whereas the Lake County Resolution Number 1539 amended the use fees and certain regulations for the use of the Lake County landfill, set forth in Exhibit B of Lake County Resolution Number 15-39. And whereas after a public hearing, the Board has determined that some of the fees and certain regulations for the use of the Lake County landfill should be adjusted, modified and revised as identified in the attached Exhibits A and B. And whereas the Board, upon conducting said public hearing, now determines the adoption of the fees and certain regulations set forth within the attachment Exhibits A and B, attached, sorry, Exhibits A and B would be in the best interest of the county and its residents. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado. Section one, the Board of County Commissioners approves and adopts the fees and certain regulations for use by the Lake County landfill as set forth within the attached Exhibits A and B. Section two, all fees and regulations previously adopted by the Board for the use and operations of the Lake County landfill, which are inconsistent with this resolution, are hereby repealed and rescinded. Section three, notwithstanding and of the provisions contained within this resolution or its exhibits, the Board hereby reserves the right to waive in full or in part landfill fees and/or regulations for the certain public community events or programs promoting the cleanup of Lake County. Such waiver or partial waiver of fees to be approved by the Board at any regular or special meeting. Section four, the resolution shall be effective upon its adoption. However, the fee schedule as set forth in Exhibit A will take effect on March 1, 2021. Section five, a certified copy of this resolution shall be posted on the bulletin board located in the lobby of the Lake County Courthouse and published in the Herald Democrat, a newspaper of general circulation within the county. And then we have Exhibit A, which are the fees. And the non-compacted trash is proposed to increase at a $5 from $15 to $20 per yard. The compacted trash is proposed to increase by the same amount, $5 from $30 to $35. And the prepaid trash bags are proposed to increase a dollar a bag from $5 to $6. And it looks like, Michael, was the, sorry, would you remind me, the mattresses and the box rings, was that $15 and proposed at 20 now?
Yeah, that was $15. That basically calculated at a yard of trash, so it went up to the basic yard of a trash price.
Okay.
Inconsistent.
Great. And I have not heard of any, any public comment on the fees or the posting of this resolution either. And with that, unless my fellow commissioners have comments or public comment to share, I will open it up to ask for if there is any public comment in this meeting.
I haven't received any public input directly and don't have any further discussion.
Okay. At this point, then I will open up, is there anyone who would like to comment on the proposed draft of the landfill fee increases? I do not see. I do not see anybody raising a hand or unmuting. Okay. It does not appear that any public have comments on the landfill fees resolution. And we will be considering this for adoption on our March 1st meeting when it will go then into place or be, should it be passed, going to effect, I should say. All righty. Any other comments on the fees from my fellow commissioners before we get into our next agenda item?
Nothing. I have not had any public comment come back to me, and I do not have any questions at this time, Michael.
Okay. Commissioner Fiedler?
No, all good.
Okay. Nope, just see you unmuted, so.
I was just getting ready for the next agenda item.
Very good. All right, then we'll move into the next agenda item, discussion of corner matters. As we have had conversations, there have been some developments. But we are preparing a press release to go out to the community as the Board is, has worked with partners to fill in any gaps that maybe, may exist in, in, sorry, in, in light of some of the recent activity with the corner. And we've posted to go into executive session. I do not think that we have a Zoom link for that executive session at the moment, but I will wait until we have a motion on the floor to enter into executive session before discussing further.
I will make a motion that we move into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B pertaining to a conference with the county attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on the pending situation with the coroner and the county's options for addressing the same.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and discussion?
Nothing. I don't have anything.
But, go ahead, Jeff.
No, no, just also saying nothing for me.
Okay. Chris Floyd, would you like for me to set up that separate Zoom? And also, I will assign someone else as the host on this meeting.
So you can assign me?
Okay, Katie, are you going to stay in this meeting?
Yeah, I'll just hang out here and I'll be here when you guys get back.
Okay, that sounds good. I was just trying to, thank you.
Right, yeah, Commissioner Mudge, that would be helpful if you don't mind sending out the link for that.
Will do.
And also maybe while we're setting that up, I don't know if we've done this in the past, but for people who do want to come back to agenda item four, do, I don't know if we, if we have a way to notify people when we're starting back up again in regular session, just to save peoples.
Yep, my hope is that this won't take long in executive session. So I hate to inconvenience other folks that are on the meeting right now, but they could give us maybe 15 minutes or something. This was going to be the last item on the agenda, so I apologize that I didn't realize it had been moved up.
That's okay. I think I will take a vote and I can't schedule another meeting until I leave this meeting. I have made Katie Welter the host on this call, so let's anticipate a 20-minute conversation and then coming in, back in to move into our work session on land use items. And if there's no further discussion on the motion on the floor to move into executive session, and I do not see Commissioner Marcela or Fiedler indicating that there are any more comments, so I will take a roll call. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. I'm going to leave and create a link, send that out, and we anticipate to be back in about 20 minutes to this meeting. Thank you.
Wow.
We do, uh, check loads.
Thank you.
Hey folks, this is Katie. I just received a text message from Commissioner Mudge. They thought it would be another five to 10 minutes. So I'll put that in the chat as well, but I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. It's 2:08 PM. The Commissioners are back in regular session here. Katie, do you want to please share the hosting capabilities back with me?
Yep.
Thank you very much for managing in our absence. Okay, we are at 2:08 coming back into our regular special meeting and coming out of executive session. No decisions were made in executive session. An additional topic that I would like to ask the board to consider is the approval to pay our Colorado Coroner's Association dues in the amount of $850 for this year. This will allow us to have access to training and certifications for deputies and in the coroner's office and for those who will be performing those roles.
And before we go there, Commissioner Mudge, I'm sorry for purposes of the record, I'd like to just go on and certify that the topics discussed during the executive session were subjects that are protected by attorney-client privilege and as a result, the executive session was not reported.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, can I entertain a motion to approve the payment of our Colorado Coroner Association fees for the year 2021 in the amount of $850?
This is Commissioner Feedler. I'll move that we approve payment of the 2021 coroner dues.
Well, second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
None for me.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I think we can move now to our work session item? Or do we have more comments before getting into number four on our agenda here?
I don't believe so. I think we're ready for agenda item number four.
Great. And I don't see Paul Clarkson or Landy's staff here, I don't think.
I just texted Paul that we were ready for him to hop on for this work session. And so I think he's on his way on.
Okay. Okay, great. Is there -- oh, go ahead.
No, I just said there's Paul.
Hi, Paul.
Okay, it's 2:08 PM. The commissioners are back in regular session here. Katie, do you want to please share the hosting capabilities back with me? Thank you very much for managing in our absence. Okay, we are at 2:08 coming back into our regular special meeting and coming out of executive session. No decisions were made in executive session. An additional topic that I would like to ask the board to consider is the approval to pay our Colorado Coroner's Association dues in the amount of $850 for this year. This will allow us to have access to training and certifications for deputies and in the coroner's office and for those who will be performing those roles.
And before we go there, Commissioner Madge, I'm sorry, for purposes of the record, I'd like to just go on and certify that the topics discussed during the executive session were subjects that are protected by attorney-client privilege. And as a result, the executive session was not reported.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, can I entertain a motion to approve the payment of our Colorado Coroner Association fees for the year 2021 in the amount of $850?
As is Commissioner Feedler, I'll move that we approve payment of the 2021 coroner dues.
Well, second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
None for me.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I think we can move now to our work session item? Or do we have more comments before getting into number four on our agenda here?
I don't believe so. I think we're ready for agenda item number four.
Okay, great. And I don't see Paul Clarkson or Land use staff here, I don't think.
I just texted Paul that we were ready for him to hop on for this work session. And so I think he's on his way on.
Okay. Okay, great. Is there, oh, go ahead.
No, I just said, there's Paul.
Hi, Paul. Can I put in the chat some of the items that we had hoped to touch on? And see if we want to prioritize top three to be sure to get to today? Would that work with the commissioners? Or I can share my screen?
Yeah, if you want to put me in the chat, I think that'd be great.
Okay. Actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen because it's a little easier to read. So these are our first, these are our first four of the meeting. And then here are some topics for the land use discussion. I will say that I would like to review the gravel pit and the RFP proposals to be sure to kind of get a download to the rest of the board and hear the board's feedback. Do we have any other, is there any objection to that? Or other kind of two topics to kind of identify a top three that we want to be sure to touch on in this conversation should we run out of time?
I think that those are acceptable, Sarah.
The top three that are here?
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense for me, too, yeah.
Okay, great. Very good. All right. Let's go into backcountry zoning, I suppose, as the first topic. I know that the, I saw the Chair of the Planning Commission sent the board questions as well. I added that as E here, just to kind of get some feedback because we were not able to make their meeting last night. So I will open it up to any questions or concerns that we would like to share with Land Use and/or maybe Land Use staff and Paul, maybe you could give us any kind of summary on, you know, the conversation that they were able to have last night? And give us any, a new information that they might have touched on.
Happy to do that, Sarah. So your number A, road concern, that was certainly something that we spent some time talking about. And it's an action item that came out of that, that Bryce is working with Michael Irwin on doing a inventory of public roads, county roads and public roads to kind of help in that assessment of, you know, being able to identify those accesses readily and consistently. And so we also talked about if someone comes in for a building permit and they obviously need a permit or permission from BLM or Forest Service. Those are definitely times that we would want to see those agreements at the time that they are asking for a building permit. The one outstanding area that we talked about and had vetted with Land Use Legal was when there is a dispute over private property access, which certainly comes up from time to time. And so what we expect at the time of building permit is access is something that needs to be present. But we put the responsibility on the property owner to verify to us that in those instances, they have legal access in those instances. And we, we put that reliance on them, the responsibility on them. And that's based on a legal conversation that we had that if that becomes in question, it's a civil matter between the two property owners or if there's multiple property owners on these claims like they tend to be sometimes, that it's a civil matter. And that there was also a suggestion that it, we would want to avoid being part of that civil action as the county. And it's similar to kind of a trespass issue. So we had kind of a discussion about inventorying, I guess, to sum up, the public and county roads. And a discussion about absolutely wanting to see those easements from public lands, BLM and Forest Service. And then when we have private property, we still want the applicant to sign off and affirm to us that they have legal access. And then if those things come up as in dispute, that they are civil matters that are outside of exposure to the county. And so that was, and if you have more, Paul, on that, but that was my takeaway last night.
Thanks, Sarah. The way Heather explained it last night, I think, was right on target. Is that this isn't an issue that we should involve ourselves very much in. My only problem is that I don't think that I'd like to have a building inspector trespass in order to get to inspect a building. So if it's off in the hinterland. So I don't quite know what to do about that yet at this point. One of the things that I'm thinking about doing with regard to this backcountry zoning is that we review and approve the plans for that backcountry hut, whatever it turns out to be. But we rely on the property owner to build it according to those plans. And if, if we have to give a, that means that we have to give us, we don't give a CO. So I haven't thought this all through yet.
I, I wonder, it seems to me we might have a couple of different, kind of like choose your own paths here. If I, I don't know the answer to this question, but if, if they do need a Forest Service easement or access agreement, or at least just for construction, maybe there's a construction access. And then, you know, in theory, perhaps this site could be accessed through public lands. And people might only walk to it or hike to it once something is built. So, so we might need construction access and then, you know, access and perpetuity language. But I wonder, and you might know, Anne or Paul, if, I mean, to me, Forest Service, if I were the Forest Service, I might ask that they've already been permitted for this before going through a potentially two-year process to then permit them access. So did I hear you correctly, Anne, that right now the suggestion is that we require them to have that access from the Forest Service? But I'm just wondering if the Forest Service is going to require them to have the permit conditioned on that access first?
I think that's, I think that's a really good point. And I think that if we, we could have that conversation and find out, you know, chicken or the egg kind of thing? And, and then, you know, take that into account so that we're effectively, you know, and efficiently doing it the best way. So that if we find out that they, you know, it's almost like C dot when you get a notice to construct or a permit to construct, it's notice to construct. It might be the same kind of thing. We may have to manage that to make sure that we've got processes overlapping properly. So absolutely. That was another takeaway last night was it's been probably five or six years since we sent this out to a very wide stakeholder, identified stakeholder referral agency kind of review. And so that might be another great conversation to have, to just make sure that if this moves forward, you know, we've properly queued everybody up and we've got all of those agencies that were in sync. So we talked about sure that we get, have those conversations. Particularly last night, we were talking about wildlife, so parks and wildlife, and making sure we have some conversations with them. And just making sure we go back and have conversations with all of those identified referral agencies that we had before and making sure that if we need to make updates to anything, that we're doing that.
Yeah, I know Pat Mercer from the Forest Service, our Level District Ranger, had reiterated to me that if nothing else, the consideration of the wildlife and the wildlife quarters would be of his, you know, highest priority. I think his, what he had communicated with Paul and Anne and I, when we were able to discuss with him was, you know, questions about the tundra area and above tree line and how fragile that environment is. So I think we kind of summarized or included that in some language so far somewhere, but haven't necessarily outlined specifics on regulations around that. I guess I would like to say, I think the first question on the, from the Chair, the Planning Commission Chair, was do you understand and agree with the general, you know, intent and reason to do this? And, and I'd like to touch on that a little bit because I, I still struggle. I do appreciate and I understand what I've heard from the Planning Commission of, and surrounding counties, of why they have imposed similar regulations to prevent, you know, money from talking, prevent a huge impact in areas that we, you know, are concerned with these items of wildlife and other, you know, uses and user conflict or just safety. But I just, I can't, I can't, for me, I have not yet landed on, you know, allowing a smaller structure will then likely increase the number of structures, which will increase the ability for folks to use their property. And are we, you know, are we encouraging 30 or 40 units coming in where we may only have three that could, you know, afford to do this potentially? And, and it's not, that's not like the entirety, but, but I just, I haven't been able to answer that in my own head. And I, although again, I do appreciate like the, the intent of that. I'm just not sure that that's what we're gonna see as a result of this. Any comments from my fellow commissioners?
Thanks, Sarah. I do have a question, too. And, and I just want to be able to understand it, I guess, appropriately. Because I think in my mind, there's two intents. And, and one is to control the use of the back, the potential backcountry zone, but then make the process easier. And so I'm wondering if you can help me understand the difference between that and, and the CUP process? And what, what the, what the differences are with having like a pure backcountry zone? And, and not having them go through the CUP process instead?
Sure. So, you know, we, we were definitely looking for the path that was probably the most nimble and, and the most fluid. And so we absolutely had those early conversations about an overlay, adding backcountry structures as to the use table. And basically what, where it landed, and we did have this discussion with Legal, is that if you add a use to a zone district, that use can be conditionally allowed within the whole district. So if we added largely these areas that, that these rural remote areas are currently zoned recreational or ag forestry. And so you would run, you know, there's the potential of being flooded with, because we get a lot of requests, especially like in Panarc or EE Hill, for less than a dwelling unit. And we would be probably flooded with those CUP applications in areas that potentially are really not conducive to having less than a dwelling unit, especially in residential neighborhoods where there could be an impact on property values because of that. So that was really the CUP idea. And then the overlay, it's the same. You can add something that is more restrictive in an overlay district, but you can't lessen the restrictions within that, within an overlay. So the idea of allowing less than a full dwelling unit at a minimum of 600 square feet in an overlay is actually not allowable through an overlay. You can add a layer of additional requirements, but you can't lessen the requirements. You have to give equal allowances throughout the whole zone districts. So you can, you can, you can allow an additional layer, but you can't lessen. You know, so going to something less than the minimum standard within the overlay. So the proposed zone change was definitely something that we spent a lot of time considering because it is the heaviest lift of the three different options. So definitely the Planning Commission spent a lot of time vetting that and, and talking to Legal about it to make sure that it, that was really the best option because it was the heaviest lift of the three different options on the table. But that, that's how they landed on a zone change and rather than a CUP or an overlay.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Anne.
Anne, I had a, you made me think of a question, too. You know, why not, in places like Panarc, why not also allow a lesser or smaller square footage? And how are we determining that this is going to be decreasing values? And how are, how is that not kind of comparable to the overall proposal with the parcels that are proposed to be affected by the backcountry overlay? You know, a smaller unit may very well help Panarc and/or, you know, water situations or whatnot out there. So I'm, I'm eager to hear any thoughts or this, you know, conversations that have, may have been had on that.
I'm happy to give my, my thought on this and Paul can offer it. Because I think at this point, you know, I think there's a certain amount of opinion involved in this. But, but my first thought about that is that Panarc was designed to be a residential subdivision. And with residential uses, a backcountry structure is designed to have temporary occupancy. It's not designed necessarily to have a kitchen. It's not necessarily designed to have, you know, running water, bathroom and those kind of things. So I would say that's substandard housing in a residential zone district when you consider that. So I do think that if you, and in the world of real estate and appraisals, I do think that there could potentially be a negative impact on, like, on, on other properties within the same subdivision could be impacted on these lesser builds. So I think that backcountry builds are designed to be a rural and remote structure just based on occupancy and type of structure versus an appropriate dwelling unit within a residential subdivided area. So I, I just view them as different. I do think they would have an impact on potential surrounding area property values. And in Panarc, you know, we were seeing a lot of custom builds go in there. You know, houses, probably people are spending $300 to $400 a square foot for. And then having an adjacent property that has a backcountry, at least as we have defined backcountry build, is not of like character in a lot of different ways. So that, and I would love anybody else to comment on that, but that's, that's my first thought, Sarah.
But if we aren't tying like exceptions to the building code on it and saying that you can't have a kitchen or you can't, you know, and it's not necessarily, I mean, the intent of the zone is for, with the, or the intent of permitting variances, maybe more appropriately said, is, is because of the limited occupancy or use. But that's not necessarily currently attached to kind of your right or the permitted use of having a smaller structure. I mean, a smaller structure could have all of those things.
Yes, Sarah, you're absolutely right. And Lake County has a zoning requirement that a dwelling unit has 600 square feet or more. That's, I don't know when that came into place. I don't think all counties have a minimum dwelling unit size. But a dwelling unit is defined as having a kitchen. And that's to, um, to mimic that which the state, the, the Division of Water Resources is willing to issue a well permit to a single dwelling unit. And they define a single dwelling unit as having a single kitchen. And so we, we try to mimic our, uh, that definition in the, uh, the same with us so that we don't have any conflicts of, of these factors. Yes, we could eliminate that minimum dwelling unit size of six hundred square feet, but I suspect that Anne's quite correct, that that will have a negative impact on a neighboring. And um, um, I, I think that the uh, uh, size of a dwelling unit, that zoning is, one of the purposes of zoning is to actually maintain a property value or maintain property values, not necessarily increase them, but keep them from being decreased. And one of the purposes of having a minimum dwelling unit size, hundred feet, is, is just that. Now, I also know that there are a few houses here in the town, in the city of Leadville that are less than six hundred feet, and then a tiny house is certainly less than six hundred feet. But Lake County currently can't allow tiny houses because of uh that, that restriction.
Did you, did you say, Paul, that currently six hundred feet is our minimum?
Yes.
In the, are you saying in the backcountry zoning proposal or overall?
Countywide, it's a, a minimum dwelling unit size countywide, right now, is six hundred square feet.
Okay, now I'm confused. I thought we had a minimum that was like twelve hundred square feet, and that's why you're proposing this backcountry so that it could be six hundred, but we are putting a max of twelve hundred in the backcountry, right?
No, I think that, I think, is it just the maximum in the backcountry is twelve hundred?
Yes.
But does it still have to be, does it still have to be a minimum of six hundred in backcountry zone?
There's two types of structures in the backcountry zone. One of them will be, is proposed to be less than six hundred square feet, probably without a kitchen, probably without a septic system, probably without a well. But we don't know any of that yet. And then there is six hundred feet, square feet to twelve hundred feet that will require a septic system and a well.
So we, we allow what, so normally right now, and in these areas, the zoning allows for um single-family detached housing. The zoning says all single-family detached has to be a minimum of six hundred square feet or greater. So right now, in these areas, you have to come in with a minimum for a building permit of six hundred square feet. And what the proposal is, is that on these single-family detached, not, not the backcountry builds, is that we would still have the, the minimum square footage, but we would have a maximum to try to alleviate, um, you know, the same desires that we've seen in the other communities of not having these micro mansions um uh or mini mansions come into the backcountry and to kind of preserve this area from some of those impacts. So you'd still have your single-family detached available, um plus a backcountry build for anything under six hundred square feet that wouldn't have to contain the same elements that are required under building code of a single-family home because they are a backcountry build.
We haven't actually solved that question of exemptions from the building code because we're not sure that we can do exemptions from the building code. We're still trying to find that out.
Can you put the map up by chance, Sarah?
Yeah, let me try to do that. Um, the other, I guess, comment that I, that I think is worth considering is in order to continue to um inform this proposal, I think that going through the mapping project that's being proposed on the community wildfire protection planning and mapping assets, um recreation assets, utility assets, um I, and, and wildlife corridors, I think that's going to be really important. And um, I guess for me, I don't, I don't think that setting, rushing through and approving or prioritizing this now is worthwhile when we have some other pretty big uh priorities and we have an opportunity and a uh plan on the table being proposed to the board to go through just that process that I think will really best inform any decisions to be made on a backcountry proposal. I'm gonna stop talking so I can focus on pulling up the map and not doing two things at once.
Sarah, can I ask a, a clarifying question there? So i- 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 is the implication of what you're saying is that if we had that community wildfire protection mapping done, we might, that would influence where this zone gets drawn, where the backcountry zone gets drawn? Because we might wanna keep building away from some areas that are particularly high risk or that, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I, I would suspect that that would be a result um of the mapping and we would, yeah, one, one result that we'd get definitely better insight on.
Can, Kate, Sarah, can you expand on, on that proposal? So, because I, I, I don't think that we're, we know anything about that yet, so. So Katie, to, to, I, I'm sorry, I saw Katie's question really quick. And so, yes, um, we have talked to Erin about that. And um, we, we're not looking to grant exceptions from the building code. What we're trying to work on right now, and the one area that, that gives us pause is as we adopt the two thousand eighteen code, we are required to adopt the energy code. And so we are, um, I've hope, I've actually reached out to um building of uh code officials at Colorado Code to help us navigate if there is an ability to consider backcountry structures with temporary occupancy um in any, in any, with any different lens as to the um energy code. So we, our intention from the start was not to excuse the backcountry builds from, from the building code.
I was just thinking, in case you might need help with that research. So i- if you guys reach any stumbling blocks or, or anything, if I can be helpful and, and the commissioners approve, I'd be happy to help.
Anne, in response, thank you, Kay. Uh, in response to your question, the proposed um mapping that we would be looking to um gain and, and produce out of the Community Wildfire Protection Planning Amendment process, one would match Chaffee County and the values that they've mapped and the way that they're mapping them. But through that process, um, there would be clear delineation and percentage of, you know, private, which I know, and, and Bryce has been working on um a lot of these data points to inform um the modeling that we could um take advantage of with CFRI um to produce those, that mapping for us. But it would include recreation um assets, uh water, stakeholder assets, utility assets, which would include water, um XL, things like that. Um, you know, we would look at uh map some of those roads, the water uh table, the water basin of Parkville, and a number of other items, uh, you know, incorporate probably like the hazard mitigation plan and mapping. And, and so an overarching idea, uh, intent of that process is to gain similar tools and methods of um of looking at planning for the county. Um, in this case, it would be, you know, fuel mitigation, wildfire um protection planning. Um, but I think that it would help inform, you know, things like a comp, if we were to do a comprehensive comp plan revision, um, it would also really help in, in those processes. If, for no other reason than to create a real, like, a more common language for us all to understand and talk through, um, you know, influences of strategic development.
That sounds great. Uh, uh, would this be like incorporated into like GIS layers? So that when induced, but we can do um parcel-specific investigations when?
Yeah, definitely. Yep. No, absolutely, we'd, we'd have that access. And like I said, Bryce is working on collecting a lot of data that he can. Um, and then there's a specific like formula and modeling that's done to create some of these uh maps and these categories of, you know, one of them, for example, is creating a map of the top five, you know, percent of the area that we could um mitigate regarding wildfire. Um, I, I understand that isn't necessarily addressing the backcountry issue here. Um, but, you know, what's the biggest bang for our buck in, um, you know, the type, top five percent of the forest in the county? Yeah. So I, I think that this, this proposal, um, I, I just shared a, a timeline with the board a few days ago, and um the proposal, the planning process and the education outreach with the public and with land management partners would go through October. And starting in October, the preparation of um the documents and the mapping would then ensue uh with documents to be ready for, uh, you know, a CWPP or Community Wildfire Protection Plan Amendment to include these maps um and to include things like those recreation valued, values and utility values um on top of what we currently have in subdivision, um outlining subdivision uh safety concerns um in our current plan. Uh, an amendment to, to be considered for adoption um or acceptance uh January of twenty twenty-two.
Um, I would think that all of those layers and that information will fit nicely into the proposed site plan review. I mean, that'll make that um much, um, you know, having that kind of easy to apply um site-specific to the site plan review outlined in the backcountry. Um, I, I see a huge benefit of that. So um when that is online, I think that it would, my, my just first thought about hearing that is that it would align nicely um with those standards and that review for, you know, on a, on a case-by-case basis. But that really helps look at those proposed sites as they come in more, you know, more effectively and, and quickly and efficiently, so, and to identify hazards.
Sarah, I mean, I ask, um, would you, would your, then, after all of that is accomplished, would you be looking to amend the zoning map in accordance with all of that new information?
I don't know. I don't, I, I, that is not, I've not considered that. I, I'm very, I'm very hesitant to amend any zoning uh at this point. And or, you know, we could bring up a question of not including certain zoning in this, which I think is also of value, um, you know, in certain areas that are highly impacted already. Um, if, if we're so concerned about wild, like wildlife and, and impacting areas too much. Um, you know, I, I, I know um there are some people that really feel adamant about not including the industrial mining, but I, I just don't see why that's not a part of this conversation um at this point either. At least those, you know, even certain parcels that are um fully accessible by road. But Commissioner Marcel, do you want me to zoom in on anything in this map here? Did you have a question or an inquiry?
No, I don't right now.
Okay.
Okay, actually, I take that back. I do have one question. The, the yellow overlay on the east side, can you tell me what that is?
That's the industrial mining um zone. This? I can't hear you, Kayla.
Is, yeah, that's it. Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Um, I do have, let's see. I'm looking to see if we have a, in our list on this project, the, yep, here's the slope um which, um, you know, Bryce had stopped at just identifying thirty percent or more slope. Um, and I know he brought this and showed this layer to the planning commission. But if we want to even further set, you know, a formula over this, we could, in theory, I don't know how long it might take, but um I mean, I, I would think that we would want to do that, especially if we are considering the capacity of staff to do these site revisions, um because there might be some parcels that simply don't have, don't even have, like, are ineligible um as they sit because, even because of um, you know, if they need a certain area of the parcel to be able to put a structure on and they, and you know, there's like this one here, I see. There's such a small amount perhaps that you're even able to put a structure on. We might want to have that vetted before we put this into practice, which I think can be done.
Wait, sorry, Sarah, are you, are you talking about upfront excluding parcels from the B C zone proposal that from this mapping exercise are, are of too great a slope?
I'm just talking about identifying those, um, and I don't, and, and kind of understanding what majority or those that really would not meet the criteria to consider any kind of build. Um, and I don't want to say that, I mean, I have not done the math. So when I, as I'm pointing out, a, a parcel in theory here, you know, I'm thinking this bigger parcel here, that, that looks like it could be over thirty percent slope on most all of it. And so there's, you know, if this area here is enough to put, I don't know how big of a structure um or not, you know, that, I think it would be worthwhile to kind of do all of those exercises, especially in, you know, i- i- considering the amount of, of staff time that we might have, might be putting towards this. And again, I, I, I think that there's so many more questions on this that we can really work through. And I'd, and I'd also love to, you know, figure out, I think a big, important piece of this is hearing from the public. Um, and so if, if we don't get to a public hearing on the proposal, you know, I, I would very much like to incorporate um outreach and, and the solicitation of feedback from the public and other partners still, and also in a way that really gets us, you know, thinking about how to, how to respond and better, better construct this idea.
I, I think you're absolutely right, Sarah. And I, I think that's kind of where the next steps in, in trying to start doing some um a big outreach and, and getting prepared with um some marketing pieces or some fact sheets um to start public awareness and engagement. Um, because, yeah, I think it would be, have to be a, a, you know, so obviously needs to be a very transparent process and with lots of engagement. So I think that that was kind of, kind of queued up as the next step. But I think that we backed up um to say, hey, there's still, you know, several different areas. And I, I just, if you, if we start looking like per parcel, and maybe, Paul, you've got the expertise here. But, you know, so right now, like, on any of those parcels, right? But, you know, so right now, like on any of those parcels right now, they're zoned rec. And so, you know, a parcel is always going to have some kind of of zoning layer associated with it. So right now, as the code lies today, they could come in with any of these parcels and attempt to put a single family home because to use by right. And so we would have to do a site specific study of that area prior to issuing a building permit. We would have to make sure that they can meet setbacks and and there aren't hazards there. So you know, right now, these parcels are protected from not being able to build on them. You know, the only restraints being all the natural restraints that that you've identified already, but the zoning allows them to come in and, you know, if they've got the wherewithal and enough money and engineering studies to properly mitigate an area, there's nothing that precludes them from being able to build on there. You know, almost anything is buildable with enough money. So whether it's zoned what it is currently or if it were to have a zone change, you know, if it stays the same, and I think that's the other kind of thought is if all of these areas stay the same, they currently can come in and apply for a building permit. We may have some layers to put out there that they need to consider and mitigate. But with enough enough attention, time and money, they probably could bring something to fruition. So as they sit right now, I don't think there's anything keeping any of these areas other than the physical restraints from being developed. And I don't, so I'm not quite sure, you know, the difference between a different zone district per parcel. If I'm explaining that right, so or and maybe Paul, you can, if you've got a thought on that, I would just wondering what the difference would be.
I I also don't, I'm sorry if I misinterpreted you, and I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest that we do a zone district per parcel or just get ahead of, you know, where to create efficiencies for staff if there are certain parcels that are, you know, ineligible and don't meet any other criteria. But I I think, I think, I think too, back to kind of an overarching point of mine, you know, as you talk about doing education outreach or some big process, I I just get a lot of angst over all these other things that I know we need to be, we will need to be doing. And I, yeah, I I'm not sure that I prefer to prioritize staff's time right now there, but that's my, that's my sense.
I I'd like to say that I think that's a legitimate concern on the county commissioner's part. In a lot of ways, statutorily, the planning staff works for the planning commission. But, you know, the Board of County Commissioners are the ultimate boss. And if the county commissioners were to indicate that they'd rather have staff working on something else, I think you have the position and the authority to say that. Because I don't think that, because there's still a lot of work that has to be done on this. And if you want staff time to go somewhere else, we should probably be talking about that.
Yeah, I kind of think that was kind of a hope last night of of kind of getting maybe some direction on if, you know, if, you know, some direction from the board. And and so hopefully, I think we were kind of maybe all kind of poisoned in waiting to kind of maybe get that today since there wasn't an opportunity last night to get that. And so I think that was kind of a hope today.
And I I will ask for my fellow commissioners to chime in, but I don't, I don't know that there is enough information shared yet and outlined for the rest of the board to be able to make that decision today. I will just say that. Also, and, you know, one of our topics that we want to touch on today, the RFPs and the gravel pit. You know, that could also be a potential project and a time suck that that we need to incorporate and we haven't yet had that conversation. But are there any other comments from Jack or Kayla on capacity questions right now?
No, this is this Kayla. I think, you know, in speaking in alignment with Sarah, it it's, you know, we have so much growth that we're we're preparing for that it seems a bit odd that this is a focal point for us. And so I think maybe we just need to work through that a little more to understand why it's a focal point. I'd at least like us to go through the document that Heather had sent us last night about, you know, put these questions down and we can or 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 give us your answers to the questions on this page so that we can understand, you know, what questions you might have about the zone district. And I'd be interested in going through that process with the planning commission. And at least asking those questions and getting those questions answered and then looking, looking at all of the building and land use priorities and then determining, you know, maybe a running list of what is a priority and why?
Yeah, and this is Jeff. Sorry, Kayla, I didn't mean to talk over you, but I was gonna sort of agree. I think I need, I need something like what I think I heard you just suggest, sort of like a list of the, you know, kind of priorities for like new planning work, you know, what is the sort of current anticipated workload on just kind of regular order, you know, handling applications and and other work, you know, just to sort of help us work through giving you good guidance on where to where to prioritize your time, especially on new business. And also have that discussion about what additional, you know, staff capacity or consulting capacity this department might need. And I don't want to overstep, you know, given that we don't have a county manager and, you know, we have one commissioner, sort of like the day to day, you know, managing commissioner, I don't want to overstep on, you know, on an individual commissioner's role. But it does seem like there's some, there's some board level discussion there about making sure we have you resourced right as a department and have the right direction from the board.
I would agree. I like that suggestion a lot, especially as a new board to revisit all of those priorities, because I I feel like that that conversation kind of got cut short when we did have it with the influx of of a bunch of new planning commissioners. I don't think we quite talked through the entire list that was collected between the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners. So that might be a good place to start and that that might then kind of air out and shake out the get everybody on the same page. I like it.
And may I presume that you'd like for staff to not do much in the way of backcountry zoning work until you actually have determined that this isn't something you want us to go towards right now?
Can I make a, can you hear me?
Yep.
Sorry, can I make a suggestion, Sarah? Can I meet with Paul and Ann? And myself, and we can make that list of what they're working on internally, and then we can bring that back to the board to say, here's the list of things we're working on. Let's prioritize this together.
I think that'd be really helpful to inform, yeah, what 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 time staff is spending now and on what to match with commissioner priorities to match with planning commission priorities. I think that'd be really smart to incorporate into the conversation.
I think that's a good idea, too.
Thank you, Kayla.
Okay, can I just ask, sorry, as a new commissioner, what's the right way to make sure we're getting planning commission sort of input and you know, I don't want to go in circles with them. I mean, is this something we do jointly with Heather as the chair? Or do we do it ourselves? And I mean, I'm just trying to make sure we're on the same page in terms of like the right order to bring the planning commission itself in on this.
We can have another work session as the board to talk through staff capacity and our priorities and bring that to the planning commission for a joint work session to to then yes, speak through with that group.
That's the way we would ordinarily do it, is that the the board attends a planning commission work session and discusses with them the priorities that that you, the board, would prefer to be seeing us doing.
Great. Sounds good.
Okay. So we'll go from there. Commissioner Marcela and staff will wait to hear from you and I'll share out a running list that I have and the board can add to it. And we'll see when we can next schedule a work session here to discuss those lists. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. So next on the list, we have the RFPs for the gravel pits, talking through that, and then three enforcement of rules and regs, engineering costs and other items imposed on applicants. So the RFPs, I have been working with land use staff and public work staff on any potential opportunity to lease out either or both of our gravel pits. We've talked about the Half Moon gravel pit. We have the airport gravel pit. Not sure if everybody is super clear on the location of either of those. I'm happy to pull up a map to help the conversation. And the idea was to generate some significant revenue as kind of has been really preliminarily projected by the assessor's office to supply, you know, our anticipated losses in revenue. Some complications and, you know, factors have come up, you know, we are concerned of losing or not being able to utilize our gravel pits. We are one of very few counties in the state who operate and have, you know, current permitting for a gravel pit, let alone two. One of the thoughts of a great benefit on the airport gravel pit site would include, or the proposal that we present would include removal of the Part 77 on the airport improvement plan, which is large amount of material that still needs to be removed alongside our runway. Not very close, but in proximity of our runway to meet all FAA, you know, specifications of 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 what that site should look like. It's not, we don't have a, I don't believe, Michael Irwin, you can chime in if I am wrong, I don't believe that we have a deadline to meet that. It is just a part of the improvement plan and it would help us perform our diligence in in moving forward and making that happen. Michael, I see.
Biggest thing is the Part 77 stuff, we just need to show that we are working to get it removed. Recently, we've been removing trees so that we could dig in that area to remove dirt. There's about 2.5 million cubic yards of dirt that has to be removed, so it's not going to happen overnight. And you know, there's one whole area full of trees too that has to come down before that can be removed. So we're looking at tree removal this summer, probably open it up to some of the public to cut firewood out of there and get it down and out of the way so that we can start moving forward. The intention is to get a full taxiway that runs parallel to the runway so that airplanes do not have to back taxi down the runway. And just make it safer for everybody that flies into the airport. So there's not, won't be traffic on the runway when planes are trying to land.
So this this area, I pulled up my screen, this area would be all the material that would need to be removed.
Actually, it's going to be further out to the fence.
Oh, I, okay, I'm looking at the wrong boundary.
Yeah, do you see the fence line there?
There, yep.
Yeah, it has to go up to that fence line.
Okay. So anyway, that that would, that was a bonus as far as considering, you know, what conditions to include, and this is the airport gravel pit that we're talking about here, which is in current operation. We have our our crusher out there and we produce our own road base and work with partners and, you know. And then the other sites, just so everybody, we're sure that everybody's on the same page, is the Half Moon gravel pit. And this seems less, a less desirable site. But we do have inquiries about that. So we're moving along with this and thinking that we had something to bring to you, but it occurs to us after getting some requests that, you know, CDOT projects are continue to happen and we've gotten some requests on, you know, leasing the Half Moon pit. And we also need to finish with some agreements that we have with the Forest Service and and so negotiating into an RFP, we'd at least need to be sure that we, you know, get the same value or something comparable to what we're able to do ourselves, that we're able to meet some of the ongoing projects that we currently have agreements with partners under. And so we're not quite sure that the timeframe is still right. We're not quite sure we propose, I think, last conversation I have with Michael, to to put this out this year. But I guess I will stop there and allow the commission and I I just, I would like the conversation with the full board now to kind of touch on, I'm sure I left gaps in our full consideration. Or if Ann or Michael or Paul wanted to chime in as well, please do.
You know, one of the only other things that I wanted to to say is, you know, especially with our airport pit, we make a pretty good road base or the county. We don't have to pay for it other than to make it. A lot of people, the CDOT likes it because it does have a little bit of clay material in it, and I think that's why the person that wants to run the pit there wants it and not the Half Moon pit. The Half Moon pit is more of an asphalt aggregate. It makes really good asphalt. That's what Lake County's paved with. And we do have, you know, a CDOT project this year from McQuistie Drive all the way to Granite. And I've had some conversations with asphalt people that want to or interested in using that pit to make their asphalt instead of using ACA like it's been done in the past, which is our neighbor out at the Half Moon pit. You know, we do have a permitted mine. It is ready to go. That one, I would, I keep saying I have no problem with using the Half Moon pit. I just don't want to see our pit close to town, usable anywhere in the county to not become ours or be mined out before we, you know, in the county not have that asset anymore. And I I think that Lake County, if we do rent it out or lease it out, we need to be in the driver's seat, not the people wanting to lease it. And, you know, we can, we can make some limitations on what they can take or what they have to make for Lake County along with everything they sell out of there, they need to pay a royalty on. I think, you know, that's where I'm coming from. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I, Michael, I I I think you're absolutely 100% right. And and I was, my thought was my thought was that when we were having discussions on drafting the RFP, we wanted to make sure that all of those things were incorporated in it because of the importance of that. So it was, I was thinking that we, you know, we were putting a limitation of them first that the the awarded party would have to do core sampling to identify how much resources is present at the airport, at the airport pit and then putting a maximum limitation that it would either a time limit or a, I think it was 20%, correct? 20%, no, they couldn't remove and process more than 20% of the resource once the total amount was identified through core sampling and and or, I can't remember what the time was. The engineering firm had also said potentially adding a timeframe in there. So I think the RFP that we've been talking about would make sure that we quantify exactly how much resources there, put limitations on how much they could utilize of that, just like you pointed out how important that is. And then those other two things that that we would make sure that we were getting industry standard royalties or maybe better, maybe top, top market rate for royalties and then also making sure that they replace or they provide that same benefit to the county that we're able to realize right now. But they would use their manpower in order to do it, but we would still be given enough material to continue having that available for critical infrastructure in Lake County. So is that, was that kind of everybody's understanding that that those kind of things were kind of being are those were being considered within the proposal?
Yeah, I think Michael was clear on his concerns from, you know, the start of this conversation and we were sure to add those in anticipating some sort of negotiation. Now, the the other thing I just want to offer to the board, one of our work sessions with the city, you know, back to kind of the point of staff capacity and other projects that come up. You know, the city talked to us about a potential consolidation of Streets Department and Public Works. And so with that new information, I I don't, I I would like to carefully consider what we commit ourselves to throughout this year, given everything that we're anticipating overall. And so I think, I think that's, I think that's an element. I also think with the the completion of that asphalt paving plan and incorporating that into maybe a broader or more comprehensive streets plan, you know, we we really have yet to see what that looks like and perhaps if we get that planning better established through this year, we would be in a better position to know exactly what more we might need or require from, you know, a potential opportunity to lease one or either of those sites.
So am I correct in the understanding then that this is a project that we don't want to move forward with in 2021 because there's other items for us to consider prior to developing that RFP?
Well, this, yeah, at this point, we wanted to bring the rest of the board into the conversation so that we collectively could discuss that very thing. You know, how do we, do we want to generate that revenue? Do we feel that we're ready? Is that more of a priority than staff capacity or what, what is the sense of the board? I I prefer to get a board consensus on, you know, next steps in moving forward than to just make that determination myself.
Cool, I I have some questions.
Yes.
I I, first of all, I mean, thanks. I mean, I just hear you run through some of the concerns or considerations, you know, from from you, Sarah and and Michael too. I mean, those sound, to me, it sounds like you're asking all the right questions, you know, in terms of like, you know, are we getting the right royalty rate? Are we getting a good deal? Are we making sure we're not mining out, you know, a county resource and then leaving ourselves, you know, shortchanged? I was going to say in the hole, but that's terrible. Unintentional joke, you know, you know, doing the core sampling so we know what the resource is, you know, reserving enough material for like, I guess. One question I have is, so can I understand the timeline of sort of when? So if I understood right, there's, there's that large C dot paving project and there are some some contractors for that project for this summer. So is is there a timeline where the, you know, we need to let those contractors know by? You know, I'm just trying to figure out, we need to answer some of these questions by rather than letting things slip.
Yeah, and then I guess that's kind of this satellite issue of, you know, we have gotten the request of what our royalties might be should from at least one contractor. I've only been contacted by one contractor. Should they be awarded by C dot? They they'd inquired for the use of the half moon pit, correct? Yeah, and and so that also was kind of this thought that we had of, well, maybe we wouldn't want to even put an RFP out for both and have that option for some of those projects, those annual projects as they come in. But that aside, yeah, I I'm not sure how we have typically gone about that or when the last time that did, you know, fall into our lap as a request. And would we, you know, do we put out an RFP for the use or do we have that, you know, once somebody is contracted with C dot and they come to us, we just go through a permitting process? You know, for the year or the length of the project? I don't know that we know all the answers to that question unless staff does.
The only thing that I would throw into the mix is that if you, thinking about the impacts of having one or both pits open, the the amount of truck traffic that you're going to incur. So I think that early thoughts of having both of the pits open and in production at the same time with a, and having ACA pit already open that that there might be a lot of of traffic, truck traffic, there might be a lot of impact. And so I think that when we, when we first talked about it, and Michael, you, it seems like Michael and Paul, you both kind of have some thoughts about this is that I think we kind of landed on on maybe doing one or the other because of that, because of of the potential of of the amount of trucks and and I think being one of the biggest areas of of concern, so maybe focusing on one or the other, if if half moon might, might be more of an immediate need to Jeff's question. The contractor that's inquired about the airport pit, you know, they've wanted it for quite some time, but that's just their desire to be looking forward to finding another base of operations. So if there's contracts pending, maybe Mike, Michael, you have a better idea of a prioritization, but I would, I would just encourage you to kind of think about if both of the pits were in production at the same time, that might be a little overwhelming for the community.
Being that that all the trucks going north would have to go through Wedville, that could be a problem. Because I know that the one contractor that's looking at the airport pit wants to take it north out of the county. The other pit right now, you know, between here and Granite, it's going to be here and it's going to be for the county, not for the county, but in the county to make the highway in the county better. So and they're doing Highway twenty four and Highway three hundred. So they're doing both the major highways to the south, which desperately need work. I've talked to the one contractor that had used the half moon pit before just for, you know, their little camping village or whatever for their drivers and stuff. He's willing to lease the pit and pay us what he's paid ACA in the past. Otherwise, he's looking at using ACA again and and ask for the use of the pit for, you know, his employees out there again and storage and stuff. So either way, you know, the truck traffic is going to go up. It has for the last couple of years with just the traffic and making asphalt out of ACA and and going north out of the county. At least this time it's in the county. Last year, the the highway project in in the, in Wedville came from Eagle County, so it had a long ways to go to get here over Battle Mountain and stuff. I don't know. I think that the half moon pit may be leasing it on on a yearly basis to whoever needs it would be good. We have eighty acres permitted out there. We have a lot of material. There are some stipulations that go with that permit. And one is to maintain a water ditch out there that people have water rights to. When it's in in priority, there's water that does run down the ditch that we have to maintain. And the idea is to put a pipeline through there when we cross that ditch.
So can I just ask a clarifying question then? Sarah, the the original RFP process that you were talking about was the, was an RFP for both of those pits or would we issue two separate RFPs, one for each pit?
Two separate, one for each pit if the board decided that we would want to put that out and not kind of maintain some more control in perpetuity or have, you know, access to one pit over the other. But yes, separate, separate operations.
I'd like to also mention the fact that those permits are permitted by the state, the DRMS, the Division of Reclamation, Minerals and Safety. They are not permitted by the county. They they need conditional use permits for both of them. And I think the RFP process is including a requirement to, for an applicant to actually go through that.
So if we, if we did this, then would we have to put a like a time limit on somebody that was given the award? So if they were given the award, it wouldn't make sense for this to be rebid every year? Would, would that be something that we would need to address then in our? I don't, how would we address that? Would you put a time limit on it?
The one person that I know has has offered at least for the airport bit, they want to do it on a twenty five year period where they have access and operate the mine for twenty five years.
Seems that the material in the airport pit is more desirable for a long term lease. And in theory, the airport pit would be long term, which we would also, as we said, you know, plan to incorporate the removal of that part seventy seven of the airport and get, you know, even more benefit out of a potential long term lease at the airport site. And it seems with the activity and and some contracting going on and annual projects that perhaps half moon, you know, we we set up, we could set up the half moon pit to anticipate annual leases for the time period of projects as they are presented. And maybe, maybe we conditionally, we can, we permit the half moon pit. And we could move forward with that if that was the pleasure of the board for that scenario. Could we do that? Or would we ask each applicant to submit or go through a conditional use process? Which we've already communicated to those folks who have inquired this year who said, oh, yeah, no, that that wouldn't be a problem or we'd anticipate that. Sorry, go ahead, Kayla.
No, it's okay. I just have a quick question about that too. And and I think I'll defer to land use staff because I think if we do it on a project by project basis, that would still trigger the need for a permit from the state and a conditional use permit, right?
So the conditional use permit will run with the land. And once you get a conditional use permit in place with the half moon pit, it'll be in place or with either site. And then the DRMS permit through the state currently have those permits, the county does, and so you have to do a succession of operations. So whoever comes in as the awarded party, they would just, there's an administrative process with DRMS to to operate under that succession. So there'd be bonding and and different things specific to, so the the operator under the DRMS permit would be specific to that operation. Once we have a CUP to operate at the either site, they run with the land. If we'd ever have to do substantial changes to the, to those conditional use permits, then they'd have to go back through the process because we don't have an amendment process, but as long as the CUP stayed appropriate for subsequent operations, it would run with the land.
Okay, so if the county had the CUP for the land, then we could have somebody essentially mine it if they had their state permit and we could do that on a project by project basis because it wouldn't require that formal approval process then.
Correct. There's a few caveats to change it, you know, like the RMS permit, sometimes there, so there's just a succession in operations, it's just administrative. If you change your mine boundary, that's, that that's a more significant change and that has to go back through a longer process with DRMS. So there, there are changes to the operations that could warrant having to go back through processes. But if things largely stay the same, then then, yeah, those would be in place and run.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks, Ann.
Yeah, Michael, the the projected value generated, was it the value or the revenue that would be generated in the $800,000 range that we saw?
The revenue is what, that's what they quoted that we could make.
So that's, that's
the half moon, I'm sorry.
Airport pit. That was from Schofield.
And was that inclu, was, so was that, and I haven't looked at that in a while, I'm sorry, Michael. So if you've got that, is that just the royalty projection? I know that they broke down lots of different, you know, kind of economic impacts.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it for a while either. I just remember that number being what they proposed.
So I think within there talked about sales tax. You know, there was kind of a, I haven't looked at that again, but but I think I've got it if you want it, Sarah. I could find it. Or if you want it.
I think I have it too. It includes the personal property. I think it was all encompassing.
Okay.
All all taxation and royalties collected. And I think it presumed a lower royalty, maybe under $2, like $1.70 or something like that. But ju- just so I I think again, this is a a request to the full board to say, how how much time do we spend on? And do we move forward with an RFP for one or both locations? Or do we, you know, realize that there are other priorities that have come up? And we can set our sights perhaps on next year, maybe getting something out at the end of this year, you know, an RFP out so that we can review proposals and perhaps budget in anticipation of that increased so that we can review proposals and perhaps budget in anticipation of that increased potential revenue for where next year.
I'm not, I think I need to think this through a little bit further and just see what other questions I might have about it. So I don't know that I can necessarily give an answer today, but I'm wondering if when we do that, that inventory of land use and building projects, if we add this in there and then can identify it where it falls on the priority list, I guess.
Okay, and, and we can do the same thing too. I know Michael's planning on having their annual meeting for projects through this year and kind of three-year projection, the beginning of March. So after that, that might be a good time to kind of put everything in context, better context.
Yeah, that'd be great, I think. Because I do, I do think that there's, you know, some things to consider because I think if we look at like the overall inventory of projects that we have going on as, as a county and as a board that we need to address, revenue generation and diversification of our revenue streams is a priority. And so I don't, I think we have to be able to figure out where this fits in with both like building and land use staff, public work staff, and then overall. And what, what that revenue generation would mean in terms of us getting those bigger projects done.
Yeah, I, I was just going to chime in. I mean, that, that last point from Kayla makes a ton of sense. I was going to ask, are there other departments that, that would be impacted? So I can see. Yeah, I mean, like especially that last point is, you know, finance or who else? What other departments do we need to sort of think about? If we're going to put a burden, you know, like a planning burden on them? If we pursue the RFP project and thinking this through?
So I think, Sarah, it might be beneficial for us to take that inventory of departments and then us as a board have that inventory of priorities and then plug and play where this fits in or doesn't fit in.
Yeah, my only other thought was, you know, some administrative burden on the assessor with a new, a new operation out there. But outside of that, I'm not, I'd have to think a little more on that of, of another bigger impact to specific departments.
Do you know if we would, do you know if we would collect a mine by proceeds on that?
I'm not sure. And Heather, were you speaking about that with, we had also, sorry, Ann was ringing with Heather from, and I'm going to say the wrong, Kimberly Horn. To, to try to make sure we cover kind of all those considerations, but go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, that doesn't, so, so what Schofield is sent over to us didn't, didn't contemplate that, Kayla. But yeah, absolutely, we had certainly volleyed that to Heather at Kimberly Horn. She's the one that's helped us draft, make the first initial draft of the RFP. And, and we had kind of modeled it after one that was done in Summit County for pretty similar, it was for a gravel pit lease as well. So we used theirs as a model and, and that was part of that discussion with them. But what we received from Schofield with their kind of projection of, of revenue impact doesn't contemplate that.
Okay, so the, the personal property allocation that's included in there?
That does.
Does that include? Okay, and, and I'm imagining that, did they give you just like an annual amount? Or did that annual amount take into consideration the depreciation factor?
You know, that's a good question. I'm not, I, I don't know the answer to that immediately or I don't recall it now if it did or not. It seems like I had that conversation with Doug Rutter is the one that prepared that. And it seems like it, but, but I'm not 100% sure. So I can't answer that exactly. And we didn't talk, you know, the, the mine property. Realize, you know, the realize, realization of that, I don't think that's included in there, so.
Okay, I think if we, if we did decide to pursue that, this a little bit further, those are, those are some immediate questions that I would have for them on the estimation of revenue generation. Is, is, is those two things? Because the mine by proceeds would be assessed at a different, differently than the, the property and the personal property on the property. And so the personal property will depreciate. And so that will make the valuation of that change and the potential revenue change. And so I just would be curious to see how that, how that would, revenue projection would stack up over a period of time with the assessor's office.
To the group, the commissioners. So you can take a look at the very, the estimation.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it sounds like we'll circle back maybe mid-March or end of March on kind of assessing again, projects, priorities and capacity for this.
So it, does it, board's desire for me to reach out and just ask to quantify the basis of, of those projections? To answer your question, Kayla.
I would be okay with that, but I'll, I'll wait for consensus from Sarah and Jeff if, if they would want that as well. I think it's a key piece of information to determine if that should be a priority, but I'll defer to them as well.
I'm not sure if there's another way to formulate that, you know, generally. Without asking.
I could, I could reach out to Miguel and Stephanie and see if they can just take the information that we already have. And we can.
I'll, I'll, I, I did make that request to them as well. So I will forward what their response was on that. But I think there are some gaps probably in the information available and quantities. So we might have to just sit down and have that conversation in greater depth with the assessor's office.
Okay.
So if I'm understanding, we should, we should make sure we've circled back with the assessor first. So we sort of have like all the gaps and information they would need before and gets into another back and forth with Schofield, I think.
Yeah, I think that sounds, that sounds right, Jeff.
Very good. All right. Move on to the third topic. And I think this came up primarily in a inquiry of design guidelines, for me at least. And I had inquired with you all, understanding there was some potential development. To be sure that we had pieces in place that staff could implement and impose. And I think that, Paul, you responded and in 2015, we did adopt design guidelines, is that correct? And so are, I, I am curious to have a general conversation about any gaps that in code like that. Well, that is not a gap, but are there certain gaps in that, that you, that we might understand better today? That, that we didn't, you know, think about in 2015? Or are there other things that staff has come across that are posing challenges that we could resolve by addressing some of those elements in either site design or code? And I also have questions about, you know, discretion and direction of, of how applicants are being asked to consider, you know, other requirements by CDOT and/or engineering needs. So let's start with the design guideline piece.
I, I'm in the process right now of attempting to send all of you a copy of the design guidelines. I've just sent you all a copy of the section of chapter six concerning design criteria. That was amended by, added by resolution 2015-11. And it is pretty vague. And it was intentionally done vague. Because we didn't want to be very restrictive about how, what, how a proposal should look. That the intent there was to give guidelines, but not to give law, so to speak. Like I, I, this one says things like, "The use shall preserve the views and vistas and the design of the use shall be compatible with both the surrounding natural environment and the historic and rustic mountain architecture." Now that, that's pretty broad, don't you think? And that, that's, it's, it's just like, in a case like that, if somebody wants to come in with a fast food restaurant that has a national design, we would like them to be able to incorporate a, a more of a local vernacular. Which we have already exp- expressed to that applicant.
And Paul, have you expressed that as a request or as a need for them to meet?
Well, you, you see, unless otherwise specified, "These criteria shall apply to all proposed development requiring a site plan review pursuant to section 3.15 of this code." Which is to say that that's a subject vision that's available to the planning commission.
Because the site plan review is the planning commission?
Right now, yes. It goes to the planning commission.
Okay.
But if they, it becomes an opinion by planning commissioners and perhaps with some help of staff as to whether the building design and scale and the lighting standards and the landscaping guidelines in this section 6- or 6.15 have been complied with. And they are, they are left very broad to interpret. And gives the planning commission an ability to actually say, well, you know, I don't see that this complies with "The nature, scale and appearance and intensity of the use shall not be in conflict with the local, unique and historic architecture." Now, we could put in statements in there that say, "There shall be no broad unbroken wall planes." We do say in here that the "A development should, commercial, industrial and multifamily buildings shall have a clearly defined, highly visible entrance." Now that seems like a statement, like you go, yeah. That should be obvious, but it's not. Look at ShopCo, for instance. That was built, that didn't have a clearly defined, highly visible entrance. And it.
Right.
So some of these, some of these design guidelines here are, are based upon some of the things that Ann and I have seen here in Leadville and Lake County that we'd like to have better addressed. That these design guidelines and section 3.15 were amended by resolution 2015-11 is that it was a, site plan procedure was originally administrative. Meant that staff only did it. And we found a couple of cases in which staff just didn't do it. And we thought, well, you know, maybe it would give us a little bit more incentive to get it done if it's more than just staff. And that's what we did.
Yep. And I would also, oh, sorry. I would just also point out that, so 6.15, because you had mentioned CDOT and there was another question there. So 3.15, you'll find the criteria to address physical impacts. And then 6.15 are more the design guidelines. So there's within, the first part of, of the code is more the physical impacts, drainage, traffic. If there were any kind of, of environmental hazards, those kind of things. So preparing the site and looking at impacts to it is more within the 3.15 part of the code. And then the design criteria were more of the aesthetics like Paul talked about is within 6.15.
My, my question too is with, you know, even the gateway area north of town. You know, I have more recently heard a few times of, and hearsay, you know, of, of really our developer being pretty particular in who and what is going in on their property. Now, I think, I wonder if we don't have an opportunity to, you know, meet with the city, both planning commissions and perhaps council and board maybe to talk through that gateway area so that we're sure that like literally one side of the street, you know, we're, we're developing a full gateway entry on Highway 24 in alignment with each other. Unless that's happened. But it seems that maybe something that we should kind of plan and organize that conversation with the city.
I think that that's probably a pretty good idea. That I don't know what we're looking for.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we even thought to necessarily have that conversation. But we can only anticipate more interest on the west side of the street. And, you know, we certainly probably would need at least verification that, you know, certain design guidelines are being, where developers are being held to certain design guidelines on the east side of the street.
Would, who, and I, I don't think that we would have any problem with doing something like that. I mean, this is something that is going to have, the gateway is going to have an impact on the city of Leadville as well as, as well as the county. We haven't received a submittal yet. The last time we talked with them, they were going to be submitting sometime in January. That's come and gone and we haven't heard from them, have we, Ann?
No, we have, we have two businesses that have conducted. We have one application that we've sent back that's incomplete for one business. But they, but we've seen a rendering of that. I guess we've seen a rendering of the other. I, I guess I need to be kind of careful. But so, yeah, we, we, we have not accepted an application for either. We've got, you know, two potential businesses coming in.
Sarah, we are talking about the corner of Mountain View Drive and Prospect, right?
Yeah, that area in the corridor, Poplar or, yep. The northern gateway area.
Well, and the gate, and gateway, yeah.
Sorry, just to gate the entry to kind of the more, the larger populace of Leadville Lake County. Community, but just the the physical roadway entry.
We determined that we have two projects right there that are looking to develop. And we have drainage issues there and we have traffic circulation issues there. We asked both of those projects to get together and collaborate on addressing those items. They have agreed to do so and they are doing so right now.
We did talk to them about the desire, and I think it's within the car plan to to be mindful of our gateways and and the the aesthetic qualities and 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 I think that was the whole desire within the design guidelines. And I think when we were doing those back in two thousand and fifteen, seeing as how we never really had design guidelines before, the desire at that time was, you know, as Paul said, intentionally vague, we we did have a little bit of a conversation about how specifically wanted to do about the architectural guidelines of them and I think there was a desire to take a baby set step into design guidelines at the time. But like you said, Sarah, maybe that it is the time to be a little more intentional and thoughtful if you want to further direct that through code of what those, you know, if if there are certain desired outcomes for businesses and and to establish that expectation initially and those initial conversations too.
Yeah, I think it seems like the time and conversation with the city. But I think I think too part of, you know, accepting change and development in my mind at least is is in large part that design piece because there's we can, we can really thoughtfully construct something that, you know, in theory could be used and desirable down the road. And I think that's, you know, part of what kind of turns us off perhaps as a community or as individuals on certain types of industry coming in is, you know, that look and or kind of it's stopping there. Oh, and and perhaps having an inability or a perceived inability to then kind of reinvent that space should it be, should there be a transition, another transition in the future? And that business doesn't work out. So I think, yeah, I think it's, I guess, I guess it's the time and if let's try to schedule a a joint conversation with this with the city as well.
Would you like staff and or I to actually arrange that? And would this be with the planning commission, both planning commissions and the board and council?
I could, you know what, I'm I actually have a conversation with the mayor tomorrow. I could bring this up and and see if he comes up with any other ideas on how to best arrange that and report back to you all.
Okay.
Once once planting that seed with the city.
Yeah. Issues that we will always have to deal with is decisions that were made years ago that we can't do very much about. Such as the alignment of Mountain View Road is a former railroad aligned. And the alignment of Prospect up there used to contain that seventeenth street used to go straight through to Prospect. And C dot actually closed that off. I I believe that's what I learned from from Michael. The development that occurred on that corner developed, did so in the manner that it did prior to any kind of local jurisdictional review. And we're talking fifty and more years ago.
And there's only so much we can really do with that.
Right. I mean, wouldn't it be nice if we could realign the streets all in that area? Probably not possible. The what the like, for instance, the intersection of six Sixth Street and Harrison is offset from each other. And that decision was made a hundred and forty years ago, not realizing that it turns it into a three way light rather than a two way light. So what we're what we're trying to do here as as staff planners is to make sure that this circumstance that we're stuck with will work twenty five, thirty years from now.
And then that, thank you for bringing that up in that way. And I, and I know you want to say something. But Paul, I think that's, that's where I I think it would just be helpful, perhaps if we could collectively continue those conversations because I think there's only so much that we can or or and maybe very little, if anything, we could even try to remedy from that and or expect of certain property owners. And I just want to be really careful that, you know, even in requesting applicants to work together. You know, if it was a request, great, but a requirement, I, you know, that that kind of worries me. Depending on all different kinds of situations. So I think that's just the conversation to be aware of and and for us to, you know, be sure that we're not. I don't know, we're we're taking, we're taking the right amount of steps.
I don't Sarah, could you, could you elaborate a little more about the concern with having applicants work together? Because I, I just want to make sure I'm on the on the same page and that I'm understanding the concern appropriately because I think in the instance that Paul was talking about was to me and my limited knowledge of this situation is related to the traffic congestion in that area. And so in order to have those businesses not have a conflicting CUP process that that traffic plan and that flow is worked out through a collaborative process with with each of those applicants. And so I just, I just want to make sure that I understand what your perspective is on that.
Yeah, and I I think, well, my first understanding is that that's kind of C dot directed because of the highway. And second, it certainly is always great to work with your neighbors on, you know, what what plans are coming. And here we have, it seems like simultaneous process between adjacent property owners potentially. But I don't know to what extent to require like a joint traffic plan or I I'm just not sure. And if we have very different capabilities in applicants, if we have a, you know, small local guy and a huge, you know, global conglomerate coming in. You know, there there could, they could be working in very different capacities. So I I am not suggesting that you know, the suggestion to incorporate those can be had, but maybe that's, you know, is that something for C dot to really look at and like combine those kinds of two conversations and or designs? Or what? I'm not sure.
We didn't require them to do this.
Okay.
We we if they would, and they both said yes.
Okay.
Agree with why.
Well, and I I also just want to mention that that they did have conversations with C dot. C dot directed them to use hoplar over. They had concerns about coming off highway twenty four. So they C dot was involved in all of these conversations. It was kind of the front end conversation. And so they directed them to use a roadway that wasn't designed for the the capacity. I mean, that we spent a lot of time talking with Michael and and just looking at at poplar that wasn't ever really designed to hold. You know, so so a county road or county, a street, excuse me, was was determined by, you know, the conversation was C dot to be the most appropriate access point for one of these businesses. And then as a secondary access for the other. So C dot's involved in in part of of all of this, but they were, they were all part of the conversation too.
Yeah, and as part of our review process on the staff level, C dot absolutely would be involved.
So Sarah, can I I think that we've narrowed this down to like one instance, but I would imagine that given the rate of development that we are experiencing in our community, I'm wondering if you could tell me more about if this would be a continuing concern and if it would be what what you might recommend from the building and land use staff to alleviate that concern. So would it be a process of them approaching the stakeholders and asking if that collaboration is appropriate? Or is that something that you just, that we would just want to avoid altogether?
I don't know that I'd anticipate. I mean, maybe perhaps this is, you know, it triggered a thought on similar to how, you know, the Forest Service is shifting like NIBA process instead of one area at a time because it's such a lengthy process. You know, perhaps this is something where C dot could look at that entire corridor. If they have not already. I mean, they should have done a lot of traffic studies with the rail yard too. So so maybe it's worth a conversation with C dot to kind of address traffic in that area as a whole so that this isn't a nightmare for, you know, projected development throughout that area of the corridor.
C dot wasn't even aware that there was a road cut on to highway twenty four to the what shall we call it? The 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 city on the hill. Called that.
Yeah, they weren't even aware that six six crossing Harrison, as you mentioned before, wasn't aligned until we did the the new light downtown.
See, so so C dot, while we get great advice from them, they don't know everything.
Well, my other question would be because I I just to find to this direction a little bit is that am I hearing that? You know, when we go to C dot and any any development that has occurred, C dot has certain criteria, you know, that for driveway cuts, be it whatever kind of development is, and and they don't take on the responsibility. You know, they require traffic studies in order to issue access permits. They and and they don't take on the monetary responsibility or or the study responsibility of it. They, you know, that is always a practice that they put that on the applicant, the, you know, whoever the proposal is, the developer. And so like on this, if we were to find that poplar street could not wasn't designed adequately or can handle the projection of of the this new design, you know, and thinking of doing development right and doing it better. Because I I absolutely hear that conversation or I think that's part of my takeaway is that if we determine that a property owner is too much of a financial burden on a on on certain property owners, that we should bring that back for a a county solution or a C dot solution or a I I'm a little confused just because typically, you know, I've been used to whomever, whoever the party is pulling the permits and asking for the development. Development pays their way. So or, you know, there's costs associated with it. So I guess I'm I'm not completely understanding, you know, when we make those calls of saying, you know, there could potentially be impacts here that need to be mitigated. But in this particular instance, the property owner doesn't have the ability to be able to afford those those. And so are we supposed to treat those situations a little differently? I don't quite understand.
Well, no, and I think I think Anne, I think Sarah's concern and Sarah, if I'm not articulating this correctly from how I understand it here is that if we have two businesses in that, like example, in that location and one has a much higher level of ability to be able to afford higher level or higher cost engineering studies, it may be inappropriate to ask them to partner with a smaller business. That's looking to develop because there may be concern about the cost share. Is that accurate, Sarah?
I think cost share and timeframe on on development and projects, but but I think the the conversation has broadened just the curiosity or potential of, you know, us kind of developing a comprehensive plan with the city for that area. Because I know there's, you know, there was huge drainage conversations when rail, the rail yard went in and and what you know, what of those are have been alleviated or still need to be addressed? Should development happen along the commercial highway? You know, that highway facing property along twenty four on the west side of twenty four. I don't, I I hadn't anticipated this part of the conversation, but I think it's worth trying to perhaps wrap our heads around so that it's not you know, how much, how much is it a burden on this one person and this applicant? Because they're the first versus the second versus, oh, we still haven't dealt with it. And the eighth property owner down the line now has to deal with, you know, bearing the burden, not saying that that's a trend or that's what I see. So we avoid that kind of thing from from potentially happening.
That, Sarah, is not a new problem.
Right.
Like for, you know, if somebody, somebody wants to build a house out at the end of a dirt track. So we make them pave the dirt track. Then all of a sudden, all along the road, it's all opened up to be able to develop along the road. Well, should not those individuals pay their fair share of of that new road? That that's the kind of problem that is. And we, we don't have regulations in place to accommodate that. But it's not a new problem and there are jurisdictions that actually have adopted that, that kind of, kind of thing. But we also need to have a but a a nexus impact study and we can do this better with impact fees.
Well, okay, so that was another thing that kind of came up. Let's revisit that briefly, maybe if you'll entertain me. How how can we do that without receiving something in our hand that is obsolete in the next six months, especially after COVID or in our current timeframe? And are there like key elements of that and costs and impacts to the county that we could potentially cover in any estimations done by public works if we have that ability that could help us with?
Are you speaking specifically in this particular case out at Mountain View and Poplar?
No, no, just in general.
So I think what you're you're asking for is 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 there a different method by which to get a nexus study? Because nexus studies are extremely expensive and have a short shelf life. Is there another manner by which we would have a defensible nexus if we applied it in development applications? I I don't know that. I I I I think that we kind of were, because I think that we were hoping to have that as an outcome back several years ago when we were kind of pushing for a nexus study and impact fees. And we were hoping that maybe there was another way to maybe use the CPI. We did spend some time working on that. I spent some time working on that with but we never came up with with a defensible answer. But it definitely, you know, Katie is But it definitely, you know, Katie is back here. I would love to explore if there's something easily quicker, has more longevity, and, and that we could apply, and that we would be able to, to use.
Yeah, I wonder if that's maybe a question for the new planning staff at DOLA. Maybe that's, maybe we invite them back and, or I, I, I will, can certainly reach out to, maybe Anne, you and I can reach out or and see, and ask that question. See what more we might learn.
Yeah, I just, a nexus study would be amazing, because then we can apply based on, you know, their portion of impact, and, you know, it's not arbitrary and it's consistent. And, and so, yeah, it'd be amazing.
Do you have any other, since it's getting late here, four twelve, if you're not already barely on your phones shuttling children?
No, I don't, I don't think I have any questions right now about anything that we talked about. I think Paul and Anne and I will meet and determine what they have been working on as staff and come up with that list and then bring it back to the board. But I'm wondering if it would be appropriate, or if we can put a date on the calendar by which we have that information by, so that this conversation continues and that we don't lose the momentum with it, and so that we don't not hit the rest of the things on your list.
We could shoot for our second, our, our first or second regularly scheduled work session in March.
Could we potentially do March ninth? Would that be too, too quick, Paul and Anne, for us to get together a couple times in between now and then?
That would be, yes, it is too quick. Because I, I, I had to get, I had to answer the phone. I'm alone in the office now, so I wasn't able to hear most of what I think got discussed. But when we tried to do something, and that's, that's what, three weeks from now, right?
No, it's a week and a half.
The what?
It's a week and a half.
It's like a week and a half away. Which also, it might give us more time to talk with the city too, if we want to touch in and kind of have them, they can have their planning commission have a meeting at least to kind of talk through some of the thoughts that we shared today as well.
So.
Maybe we should talk to, have, have this meeting together with the state before we try to figure out any other questions.
Okay, so I think for our internal conversation though, Paul and Anne, we can get something on the books, maybe relatively quickly. But let's, let's aim to have this, a continuation of this conversation, because there's some things that I definitely do want to talk through on the list that Sarah had provided, like the hearing process and such that I don't necessarily think needs or warrants us waiting until we have a conversation with the city. And so I think those types of topics, we might be able to, to continue on to March ninth. And then have that bigger conversation with the city, maybe closer to like March twenty-third.
I, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think that's there.
Okay, I'll put that on our calendars then, and I will get with Anne and Paul so that we can schedule something internally. And go from there.
Yeah, so what I'm understanding now is that we haven't finished the list, but we want to finish it on March ninth.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I, I think that list that Sarah had come up with, that she briefly shared her screen with.
Yeah.
I think we'd like to finish that at least, because I think that that's separate from some of the other items that we had talked about today. And I don't want to lose momentum on finishing those conversations with all of us together. And so I think the best thing for us to do is to continue to schedule that time, so it doesn't drop off anybody's radar.
I think that's an excellent idea.
That sounds great.
Cool, I'll put that on our agenda for March ninth work session then, okay, guys?
Yeah, that sounds good. You can include the whole list, and we can either, we can start at the end or in the middle and, or update if we have any other updates on the stuff too, I think.
Okay, could you send me a copy of that, Sarah? Because I am sure I have to dig through email to find it, and so if you could float that to the top of my inbox, that, that attachment, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, and I sent it in the body of an email, not as an attachment, so.
Okay.
But I will, I will, I will shoot over the, the word doc that I was sharing.
Is this your, your colorful, colorful list, Sarah?
My colorful list?
Yeah, your list of building and land use desires that we talked about like last March.
The plan, like overall projects and priorities?
Yeah.
The two, I can, I can send both of those things. I think the list of like these conversations on topics for work sessions. But I will send the, the, you know, draft and working list of overall county priorities.
Okay.
I'm sorry, is that your question?
Well, I guess that was.
You know, I'm asking for the list of like topics for discussion on work session, which is shorter and different than kind of that bigger list of other priorities.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll send them both.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds good.
Anything else for today?
I don't have anything.
What a marathon.
Yeah, thanks for your patience through our executive, executive session portion.
You're most welcome.
Jeff, anything?
No, I think that was good. I mean, yeah, we spent a lot of time getting through stuff, so, no, I'm good. And as bad as, as much as we can all handle right now. And I appreciate, you know, setting some clear dates and sort of like who's going to meet with who, so that we don't just sort of, you know, spin wheels or keep going back and not reach resolution on some of these things. So, but I think we're, we, we are good.
Sounds good, and I'll, I'll chat with the mayor tomorrow and try to reach out to DOLA and work with Michael and some of those public works priorities. Michael, do you have a set date yet? Did you send that out? For your, for your annual priorities meeting?
Yeah, March, March tenth is when it's going to be.
Oh, it was, that's right, okay. Did you set a time?
Um, no, yeah, like early in the morning.
Yeah. Sarah, I think Mabel sent it to you in a calendar invite.
Okay, all right. Very good. Okay, all, thanks very much. Enjoy your evening.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.